So we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. First order of business is to call the roll.
Here.
Present.
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 Christian Garmendia.
Present.
Present.
Christian Keon, President, Christian Williams.
Jake Boas.
Present.
And you have foremost names.
The next order of business is to welcome two new commissioners. We have Commissioner Paul Hubman and Commissioner Stan Fowler. They will be serving, Commissioner Hubman will be serving as a transportation planning policy role and Commissioner Fowler will be serving as the engineer. And if you would just each take a moment to introduce yourselves. Start, Commissioner Fowler.
Hi, my name is Stan Fowler. I'm St. Louis native, lived here just about all my life except for going to college at Rala. As you heard, I'm an engineer, civil engineer is my background. Lived in a lot of areas of St. Louis City, anywhere from the greater Ville down to Boulder Heights. I'm out west to Columbia Heights and then even downtown in Columbus Square. So I'm excited to serve on the board.
Paul Hubman, I work at East West Gateway Hospital Governments Transportation Department, been there about thirteen, fourteen years now. Prior to that, I was private sector architecture and planning. Been North County, grew up in North County in Florissant, lived in South City in Carrington for twenty-three years now.
Welcome.
The next order of business is to approve the September twenty-two four minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A second.
Call for vote.
Audrey Cole. Audrey Hubbard.
Aye.
Christian Manson.
Aye.
Christian Bradley.
Aye.
Christian Fowler.
Aye.
Christian Garmendia.
Aye.
Christian Harrison.
Aye.
Christian Hernandez. Christian Hubman.
President.
All of state.
Christian Keon, House.
Aye.
Jake Boas.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Seven hours and two decisions.
Excellent, and it's approved. Our next item is to elect someone into the role, our new role of Vice Chair. We have a nomination for Vice Chair.
I nominate Jake Banton for Vice Chair.
Stack him.
Excellent. Here we have a. Oh, excuse me. Oh, I did, I what that was right. I stopped by, so Alderman, to me, Clark Hubbard has moved that Jake Banton serve as Vice Chair, seconded by Christian Garmendia. Call for vote.
Audrey Cole. Audrey Hubbard.
Aye.
Christian Manson.
Aye.
Christian Bradley.
Aye.
Christian Fowler.
Aye.
Christian Garmendia.
Aye.
Christian Harrison.
Aye.
Christian Hernandez. Christian Hubman.
Aye.
Christian Keon.
Aye.
Christian Williams. Jake Boas.
Aye.
And motion passes the motion for voting on.
Thank you all.
Welcome. We, we serve as Vice Chair and Vice Chair for the Forest Park Advisory Board as well, so it's a great partnership. All right, we have three action items, including a zoning, zoning item that will have a public hearing. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak during the public hearing portion, Pete, please make sure you've either signed in with Michelle or that you have entered your name into the chat online if you're not here over with us. When we do get to remarks, they'll be limited to two minutes. In the meantime, we're going to just turn over the meeting to read the presentation on the chapter ninety-nine redevelopment to Miriam and the.
Great, thank you Chair Boas, hopefully the audio is picking me up. I'm just going to very briefly introduce this item and then turn it over to my colleague James Fister to present the staff analysis of the redevelopment plan. This item is a chapter ninety-nine lighting study and redevelopment plan for the two hundred South Fourth Street redevelopment area, which is the current location of the Millennium Hotel. After you receive the staff presentation, we actually have a couple of guests here with us tonight to kind of put this action in the broader context of the site's redevelopment and reactivation. So at that time, after our staff, staff presentation, I'll introduce those guests and they will speak in order. But with that, I'll invite James up to the podium. Yeah, great, so this is a blinding study and redevelopment plan. And the purpose of the action tonight is to review and recommend the blinding study redevelopment plan for the area. The ultimate action would be to adopt the plan and recommend approval of the bliding study. And here we're reviewing it against two formerly adopted elements of the comprehensive plan, both the citywide strategic land use plan as, as amended, and the design downtown STL plan, which was adopted as a supplement to the city's comprehensive plan in two thousand and twenty. So now with that, I'll invite James up to the podium.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is James Fister, I'm a senior planner here at PDA. I have the unique privilege, or my first time presenting to the planning commission, presenting not just in front of my current boss, but my former boss as well, Commissioner Hubman, good to see you. When you, when you plan in this city long enough, it's all one big weird family. So I'm going to be giving some overview of the redevelopment plan, the site context, and then the staff review for compliance. First, let's talk about the site itself. The address for the redevelopment plan is two hundred South Fourth Street. It is one parcel, it's four point two acres large. It is kind of sandwiched in downtown between Busch Stadium and the Ballpark East Garage to the west, and then Highway forty-four and the Gateway Arch Grounds to the east. It's currently zoned L Jefferson Memorial District. There we go. I just wanted to give you a, a sort of aerial offset view of the redevelopment area. This is an image that comes from the plan itself. Little more context of adjacent buildings, adjacent uses, kind of see the, the unique context, unique opportunity that this parcel sort of provides. A little background on the site itself. On the parcel, there are three connected structures, two of which were constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. One is the big recognizable twenty-eight story tower and then the ground level structure that sort of snakes through the parcel. And then in nineteen seventy-four, a smaller eleven story tower was constructed on the south end of the parcel. The buildings in this site, they are not a local landmark, nor are they on the National Register of Historic Places. At its largest capacity, the site featured a seven hundred and eighty room hotel and all of the ancillary hotel uses that go on with that. It opened in nineteen sixty-eight as a Stoffel's Riverfront Inn, operated as a couple of different hotels, but it has stood vacant since two thousand and fourteen. Something to note, and I'm sure we'll, we'll discuss a little later on, the redevelopment area does not include two adjacent parcels at one hundred Fourth Street and three hundred Walnut Street. You'll see that a portion of the original hotel structure is on three hundred Walnut Street, that parcel. Thank you. I'm going to give a brief overview of the redevelopment plan, there's going to be a lot more info shared later before I get into the staff review. This redevelopment plan is a proactive redevelopment plan that aims to sort of set the, the guidelines or the parameters for future redevelopment of the site. The plan aims to see a mixed use statement redevelopment, something that is transformative, not just for the plan area, but for the larger neighborhood and the downtown area. There's an emphasis on connecting to existing and planned assets throughout the, the downtown area. All projects that are approved through the redevelopment plan will conform with existing zoning, which is the L District, and the SLU designation, the strategic land use plan designation, which is specialty mixed use area, more on that in a moment. Two of the key elements of the redevelopment plan are the urban design regulations and the strategic principles that are contained within the plan. Again, more on that in a moment. The redevelopment plan would allow for tax abatement. The associated LCRA resolution is attached in your packet, it's attachment B towards the back. The plan would also allow for the use of eminent domain, should that be necessary. It would also allow for demolition of existing improvements subject to compliance with the plan. I wanted to touch on those two elements of the redevelopment plan that I mentioned, the design regulations and the strategic principles. These are sort of the, the heart and soul of the plan and will guide what the eventual redevelopment is. The design regulations are, you know, we've been using the word guidelines, but they really are, they're regulations. It's no plan, no project that will be built at this site will, won't be following these design regulations. There's plenty of them, they're on page twenty-two to twenty-six of the redevelopment plan. You can look through them, but I pulled out a couple of key ones. Also included in the plan are these strategic principles. These are more of the, the soul, the part of the plan. Their intention is to sort of show what the site, what the plans, what the projects want to accomplish for the community, for the region, rather than specific rigid uses or designs, but it should give commissioners and the public an idea of what the plan is, is aiming for here. Now it is, you know, up to the commission to confirm that this plan aligns with, complies with the comprehensive plan and its elements. The first of which is the strategic land use plan. As I mentioned, the designation for the plan area is the specialty mixed use area. It's a large designation, most of downtown is given this designation. It's described as areas like downtown St. Louis where it is intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. Staff review shows that the redevelopment plan conforms with this designation. The redevelopment area is also within the boundaries of an adopted neighborhood plan, that's the design downtown STL plan. While the plan, the neighborhood plan, pardon me, does not contain a specific vision or goal for this address for the Millennium Hotel, there are many ways in which the redevelopment plan align with the goals and the recommendations from the neighborhood plan. One of which is this goal of greater connectivity for the downtown area. The design downtown neighborhood plan has a chief goal of connecting existing and future assets, areas of downtown that are really vibrant, pedestrian friendly, that have really high quality street frontage. And the redevelopment plan goes right along with that. The redevelopment plan has an explicit goal of increasing connectivity, especially between these sort of, sort of four load stars of Busch Stadium and Ballpark Village, the Southern Gateway Arch Grounds, Gateway South, redevelopment to the south, and the Clevelandings to the north. There we go. Another way in which the two plans align is the pursuit of a mix of uses. The neighborhood plan aims to make downtown a, a very diverse, dense, walkable attraction for both residents, those who live in the area, those who live in the region, and tourists as well. This means allowing for and planning for a collection of mixed uses. That's exactly what the redevelopment plan is aiming for. They seek projects that offer a mix of uses that may be residential, commercial, entertainment, cultural, a nice diverse variety. I did, I highlighted a couple of the strategic principles that align with this goal of a diversity of uses, but the rest are contained in the packet as well. And thirdly, just the, the notion of addressing vacancy in downtown. It is a, a main goal of the design downtown plan to, you know, curb the, the vacancy in downtown. In fact, they highlight a series of large vacant, long vacant properties in downtown that are priorities for redevelopment, four of which are labeled as mid-rise, high-rise, large vacant buildings. One of them is this redevelopment area, the former Millennium Hotel, thus it's a priority for redevelopment. Just as an aside, it's, it's nice to note as a staff planner and as a citizen that of the four large mid-rise, high-rise sites indicated in this plan, one of which, the Jefferson Arms is under construction right now. Another one, the Railway Exchange, has been in the news as the city is taking steps to regain local control. And then this one would be the Millennium Hotel, so some positive momentum on some of these big, big parcels. Does this not actually do anything? You're the one, thank you. Go back one, please don't. I, I, all of these photos are in your packet as well, but I threw them in here just for context. As we are having a discussion, we might be referring to these, these images, staff, I keep saying staff, me, I took the pictures of the Millennium Hotel last week, it was a beautiful day. Dylan, you can just slowly click through all of these. And one more. I also included a couple of photos that are included in the bliding study itself, that all of these photos and more are in your packet. They're a part of the bliding study and redevelopment plan and appendix A. Staff, you know, we didn't have right of entry in the building, so our photos only consider the outside of the building, but it's important, you know, to have the full picture. And now I'm going to turn it over to Miriam to sort of guide the rest of our discussion.
Yeah, thank you so much, James. So like I mentioned at the beginning, we are lucky to have with us a few guests, both our colleagues at SLDC, who can speak to LCRA's work to initiate this redevelopment plan. Ryan McClure, the executive director of the Gateway Arch Park Foundation, which is playing a very important role in this work, as well as Lindsay Evans with PJV, who has been helping to advise and do some of the late work on this redevelopment plan itself. So I, I think between the four of them, they can help kind of put this redevelopment plan within the context of the larger picture about the efforts to kind of revitalize and reactivate this part of downtown. So with that, I'll invite Zach and or Rob up to the podium.
Thank you. Zach Wilson with SLDC's Incentive Department. I also present projects from Valsery Board. This blind study and redevelopment plan was passed by the Valsery Board on September twenty-fourth. This redevelopment plan is a little bit different that we've seen in the past, a little more robust design guidelines, and the blind study is a little more lengthy because we are predicting if a sale does fall through, we would like to take this to court for eminent domain purposes. That's why we usually hire out to other outside groups like PJV for the blind study on those part, those, that issue. It's also allows for tax abatement up to twenty years of abatement. Once we have a solid project, they would come back to Valsery Board and we were knowing that the amount of abatement we would be using for the future project. James helped the job, so he's covered a lot of the bases. One other thing is I took the photos inside the building, I like to point that out, so very moldy. So I'd be happy answering questions.
Good afternoon, my name is Rob War, Senior Vice President for Real Estate Development at St. Louis Development Corporation. I'm here on behalf of Neil Richardson, the president and CEO of SLDC, who had a prior engagement where he was a speaker and was unable to attend tonight's meeting. He's also the executive director of LCRA. He did email and I think has submitted a letter of support for this project. And I just wanted to reiterate that SLDC, Greater St. Louis, have been working very closely together to see that these critical assets in our downtown are redeveloped, and we think this is a great first step forward, and we appreciate your support. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, good evening, thank you for your time this evening, Commissioners, it's greatly appreciated. My name is Ryan McClure, I'm the executive director of Gateway Arch Park Foundation, and have served in that position since two thousand and nineteen. I've been with the organization since two thousand and eleven, and I've been a city resident since two thousand and three. Gateway Arch Park Foundation is the official nonprofit conservancy of Gateway Arch National Park and its surrounding areas in downtown St. Louis. Our mission is to ensure that the Gateway Arch and its surroundings are vital, welcoming, and well-supported for generations to come. We were initially founded in two thousand and nine as the public-private partnership to fund and coordinate the city arch river project, which can, connected, invigorated, and expanded the Gateway Arch Grounds, and represented the largest private investment in the national park in the, in US history at two hundred and fifty million dollars. And it established the foundation as a model for other conservancies across the country. Today, we collaborate with partners to operate and maintain the improvements at Gateway Arch National Park, Kiner Plaza, and the St. Louis Riverfront. We continue the energy of City Arch River today by funding the private portion of a twenty-seven million dollar project to preserve and restore the old courthouse, one of the most historic buildings in the city of St. Louis. One of our core values is our commitment to the community. We work every day to build trust and welcoming vibrant spaces. That is why we are involved in the Millennium Project. Like many of you, I've driven by this site every day for the past ten years and thought about its potential. Together, we can do something really transformational here. While it seems over the past few weeks, things have been moving quickly with the Millennium, this progress was only possible because of three years of work that got us to today. Work between our organization, Greater St. Louis, Inc., and SLDC to finally gain local control of this site. We have been encouraging the current owners to sell throughout this time, and to be at this point is significant, to say the least. To be clear, this is a civic endeavor. The foundation is not in this to make money, I can guarantee you that. And this is a big risk for us. But it's worth it. We are here to ensure that transformational development happens at this site. We're here to ensure that it's vibrant and active, that it's an economic driver for our region, that it better connects the arch in downtown and complements the arch. And, and we know that well-connected cities create a greater sense of hope, pride, and ownership among residents and visitors. So where are we? We are under contract on, on the site. We have contractors in the building performing due diligence as we speak to ensure that a financial closing and transfer of ownership to the foundation is possible. We're going through a methodical process with the city to ensure responsible development. This is one step in that process. We plan to engage a development partner that will help transform this site and the overall perceptions of St. Louis. We know we have a once in a generation opportunity at this prominent site in downtown. We want to ensure that the future of this site is innovative, is aspirational, and welcoming. An important and necessary step in ensuring those things is that the plan is, is the planning commission's approval of the redevelopment, redevelopment plan and these design guidelines. No matter whose hands this property ends up in, it is in the best interests of the city and the community for this site to be tied to the strategic principles for you today. Should the commission choose to recommend approval of the redevelopment plan, the foundation commits to immediately working with Greater St. Louis, Inc., and SLDC to issue an RFP for a development partner that will comply with this redevelopment plan. And we commit to enabling development that is informed by the community. Thank you for your time this evening and for all you do for the city of St. Louis.
Good evening, can you hear me okay? It's okay, I'm not sure if the mic is working. I'll try to speak up, but let me know if you can't hear me. My name's Lindsay Evans, I'm a senior project manager with PJV Planners. It's nice to see some familiar faces, but that almost makes it more nerve-wracking, so bear with me. And I get to go last, so I get to mark off on my notes what everybody else already said, so that's great. You made my job easy, thank you. I just wanted to run through the major intentions of the redevelopment plan. PJV Planners wrote the redevelopment plan along with our partners, and we also wrote the bliding study. So we're just going to run through those major aspects tonight. So the major intention of the redevelopment plan is to ensure any future development at two hundred South Fourth Street, no matter what entity owns the site, will strengthen our enduring connection with the riverfront and create an innovative, aspirational, and welcoming environment that reflects the diversity of the local and regional community. Another major intention is to allow for the flexibility required to attract widespread attention from the development community on a site that has been vacant for over ten years. We want to ensure all options are on the table for reactivation of the site. And this flexibility that's built into the redevelopment plan will enable tailored approaches that are based on site-specific development for the better needs of the community. This redevelopment plan was curated over an extended period of time with extensive input from a variety of partners. This wasn't to ensure the intended goals were captured and able to guide the process moving forward as a proactive redevelopment plan. The site care, I'm going to run through a couple of the major aspects of the redevelopment plan, I know we already touched on those, I'll give it a little bit more flower, maybe. So the site characteristics currently were a big part of determining the design regulations as well as the strategic principles. The prominent location of the site on the riverfront being seen from so many different viewpoints, both tourists and locals are going to see this site from almost every direction. This is also a site that's located strategically between the arch grounds and Busch Stadium. It has two of the best views in St. Louis from this site, at an elevation can see into Busch Stadium as well as the arch. And there's a potential of this site to reknit downtown into the riverfront, and many other sites in downtown don't have that potential like this one does. And because of those characteristics, we wanted to really make sure we spent a lot of time getting the design regulations right and making sure that those guided any future development moving forward. So those design regulations, some of which we already ran through, so I'll go pretty quickly, but requiring active uses on the site, making sure that it's activated during the daytime and nighttime is a big factor. Making cer, making sure that it's facilitating a strong connection to the arch grounds as opposed to how it's sort of cutting off downtown from the riverfront currently. We want the site to encourage access by visitors and locals and be welcoming. Making sure that the exterior lighting is connecting to existing street improvements as well as enhancing the lighting at all hours of the night so that it is a pedestrian-oriented site at all hours of the night. Ensuring that it's well landscaped, has outdoor seating areas, bicycle racks, public art. Is all an important aspect of making sure that this site fits back into the community and becomes reactivated. The strategic principles that are outlined in the redevelopment plan are a section of a redevelopment plan that are not oftentimes included in a standard redevelopment plan. We spend a lot of time thinking about these strategic principles and augmenting them with images to make sure that the intent of this plan was conveyed in both writing and pictures. The strategic principles provide an intention of what these sites need to accomplish for the community as opposed to suggesting specific uses and designs. These strategic principles are not about specific architectural forms, materials, or styles that are shown in the images. They are instead about the feeling and the emotional response the image conveys, as well as the type of space and interaction that we're looking for from the community. Some of these strategic principles are attracting the locals and tourists, making sure that the site is adaptable over time, ensuring that this site is a catalyst for not only downtown, but the city and the region as well. Making sure that a variety of uses are activated on the site for a variety of users, and ensuring that the site complements the arch but does not compete with the arch as a great asset to our community currently. Some of the next steps that we talked about, Ryan went into these as well, so I, I'll just run it through them very quickly. But this effort was a series of partnerships between parties that are approaching this as, in a deliberately thoughtful manner. We're committed to the success of this catalytic transformation as well as the success of downtown and the St. Louis region. If the redevelopment plan is adopted, as Ryan mentioned, the team is committed to additional site investigations, immediately marketing the site to the development community with these regulations in place. and further engaging the community so that we can ensure that this redevelopment is informed by the community. These steps will not happen overnight. This is not a two-month-long process. This is probably not a two-year-long process. This is engagement on this site for the next future of all of our generations to make sure that it's turned around and becomes a reactivation for the entire region. We commit to, over the next six months, determining the exact next steps of what this will look like with these guidelines in place to make sure that responses comply with the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
That is the end of the information we wanted to present to the commission. So I'll turn it back to Chair Boas to lead the questions and discussion.
Let's go ahead and take questions from the commissioners on the line since that's where our aldermen are. Commissioner Clark Hubbard, can we start with her? Do you have any questions?
She put in the chat she doesn't have any questions at this time.
And how about you?
I also don't have any questions at this time.
Any questions? All right. And let's see that. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Do you have questions at this time?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Instead of going through each one of you. Do you have questions? No questions? Yes, Mr. Commissioner Matt.
Always questions, but also some comments, and I want to also sing praises for all the work that's been done up to this point for this. You know, can't get more valuable real estate in St. Louis other than a site like this. So I agree that this is a priority, and I applaud the city and all these agencies working together to do some great work. A couple of questions for staff. One, I just want to confirm, it's mentioned in here that the site does fall within a preservation review district, so any demolition that is proposed would be reviewed by the Cultural Resources Office. Is that correct?
That's correct, against the relevant criteria and the ordinance.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I've heard over the years all the challenges of redeveloping the buildings that are there and what challenges exist, but I do think that it has been a feature of our skyline for quite a while, so it does, I think, warrant careful review of any potential demolition that might occur on the site. So just wanted to double-check with that. I will say that I carefully perused the urban design guidelines as part of the redevelopment plan and agree with Lindsay that an active use along the property is really important. I was encouraged to see that it was asked that that be on all three sides of the property because I can envision a time in the future, maybe 50 years from now, when we might not have an open-cut highway dividing our downtown and the arch grounds. So I love to see that. I will say, one suggestion that I would like to see included in the redevelopment plan, which is very small, but it relates to the urban tree canopy that we have in downtown, which I would say is not great. But I would like to see that any redevelopment plans that have a significant significant street frontage like this include a requirement to irrigate the tree wells because I think all the trees that are doing well downtown have a source of irrigation or water, or at least most of them do. So I think that would be a good addition to the redevelopment guidelines there. And finally, a big, sort of more process question that might be for David, but you know, we've had a couple of these large redevelopment plans come across in front of us over the years, and generally speaking, we pass them with these urban design guidelines, and then it goes to the purview of LCR to implement that. And we don't usually see that again. And I'm wondering, is there any precedent or process where, for example, in the redevelopment guidelines, it says before any permits are issued, it must get approval from the LCR? Is there any precedent where language has been added? Or could it be added where, in order for any permits to get issued, it would have to get approval from this planning commission?
Yeah, the plan that's presented to you is the LCR plan, so that is what you're reviewing. And as you noted, that's standard language for LCR to have that review opportunity. The planning commission under the statute doesn't really have any ability to claim that role of right. It's certainly something that could be requested as part of your recommendations in your review to be given that opportunity. You could also suggest other entities have that same opportunity. I am not aware that that is anything that has been put into a plan since I have been around, which has been a while. But again, there's no prohibition, but no of right basis for that.
So just to clarify, you're saying it could potentially be requested that they come and present to us, but we wouldn't necessarily have any approval authority?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, again, there's no formal authorization under state law for you to have that role.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, in this case, any design of a new structure as part of the Cultural Resources Office review of a potential demolition permit, one of the core kind of lenses of that review will be a check against those urban design guidelines. So that's just to mention there is that body that, in addition to LCR, in this case, would have a review role.
Yeah. I know, Marion, you and I have talked about this before, but I know a lot of other planning commissions across the region have a more direct role in terms of approving urban design and architectural features of a redevelopment for certain projects, and it's sometimes something that I wish this planning commission had a little bit more control over. So perhaps that's something that this group discusses more in the future as we look towards a new and improved planning commission. But overall, I want to say thank you again to everyone that has worked on this. And, you know, I would like to put the request in that if a developer comes, that we do get a presentation. I think that would be fantastic. So no further questions for me.
Just to clarify, that should be in our motion, the request for the presentation?
What I have seen in the past is in the cover letter that goes back to LCR with your analysis and response would be a request of that nature. You could put that in the motion, or you could just direct the staff to include that.
Great. Thank you.
We can also be directed to kind of explore the options on that and report back to the commission because since this is such a complex picture, I want to make sure that kind of the process ahead is supportive of the complex development process. So just offering that, that we could be directed to explore and then report back to the commission kind of the options. Did that seem sufficient?
I've got two questions. One's a bit more weedy. First off, yeah, thanks for all your work. I'm very excited about this. I walk past this. I look at this thing 10 times a day. It's right outside my office window, but it's in a preservation district. I know it's not listed on the national records or anything like that, but the language in here seemed rather deferential. Should the existing building be redeveloped? It seemed really deferential to the existing exterior form, and everything. We're talking about a transformational thing effort here, and we're looking at a building that you could argue looks pretty dated and somewhat tired. Is that deferential language to the existing structure and materials and everything, is that required because of the preservation district designation? Or can we soften that and give a bit more freedom to responding developers?
Yeah, I can kind of share an initial answer to this question, and then Lindsay and others feel free to chime in with additional detail. One, so I mentioned the criteria within preservation review districts that, you know, should a demolition permit be submitted at some future time, that would be reviewed against the relevant criteria. One of the primary criteria is whether such a demolition subject to the urban design regulations and strategic principles, whether that is authorized or enabled by a redevelopment plan. So that's all to say, the redevelopment plan, I would say, as it is, is structured to offer that flexibility for them to pursue a broad range of options to find like the best possible development partner and development vision.
Can I answer your question?
And the broader question I had was, the guidelines in here are very aspirational and somewhat unspecific. How do you, what is your envisioned process for translating that language to, you know, you can't just drop this as an RFP out in the world? How do you get to hear from the RFP? What's your envision? What are your options? What are you thinking about?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So this probably looks somewhat like a standard RFP review process with a lot more parties involved, right? This is going to need to be an extremely strong public-private partnership with all parties involved toward creating transformation. And what that means when it comes to an RFP is really bringing all of those, continuing to bring all of those bodies to the table in addition to engaging the community in a greater capacity to review those RFPs together as a group. So the exact process and timeline, to specifically answer your question, is not determined. But the goal here is to really understand whether we all feel comfortable with this being the guiding vision. And once we have those guardrails in front of the development community to be able to say, look, we really are in this, right? We're interested in something strategic, something innovative, something aspirational. Don't come to us with just a standard, you know, return on investment, real estate deal. And then, once we see what responses we can get and we allow enough flexibility that they can sort of tell us how they think these aspirational strategic principles are engaged, right? Similarly to the arch originally, you know, it wasn't a prescriptive, we want arch on the riverfront. It was a, we're looking to do something really big here. Tell us how you think these are defined in the built environment.
I had a similar kind of related question, so maybe don't run away. I just had a question about who are the parties involved, would be involved in drafting the RFP? Like the timeline, you mentioned it would basically commence as soon as possible, but kind of, yeah, talk a little bit more about the RFP drafting process, the timeline for, if you have an estimated one, for how long it would be open, the parties that have been involved with writing it and assessing, and maybe the opportunities for public engagement.
Sure. And feel free, anyone else, if you want to jump in. The specifics of that are not defined.
Yeah.
We are looking to, again, sort of check off this middle step to understanding where we're all at as a city on this. We would imagine that the parties that are currently involved will continue to be involved. And what that looks like formally is Arch Park Foundation has put in an offer, and there has been accepted on the site. So contractually, you know, they're leading the charge here, and their vision as a foundation is leading the charge here. The consultants that they choose to engage in that has not been determined. PGA V Planners has been involved to this point, as well as a number of other consultants that have helped these efforts over the years. And we imagine that it will take a number of public-private and consultant partners to move this forward. Greater St. Louis is involved, not in a contractual manner like Arch Park Foundation is. But, you know, we've also worked closely with SLDC. We also need to ensure any specific funding that is involved in predevelopment then would meet the requirements of that funding being implemented for an RFP process. So there's a lot of unknowns that we're looking to, after tonight, sit down in a room, hopefully, if this is a positive outcome, and iron that out. But unfortunately, it's just a little bit preemptive right now.
My question is going back to the whole thought around demolition or preservation. By reading this, there seems to be some conflict or maybe even contradiction between the notion of preserving the site and the notion of restoring the urban grid or, you know, the connectivity of downtown. What would be the, I don't want to say regulatory process, but the process, say a developer came forward and they had an idea that preserved this site as is and brought in the returns they wanted. And they proceeded in that manner. Would such proposal be approved according to this redevelopment plan? Or is the intent here to really move away from what does not do most of what's in this plan in terms of how the site is currently constructed? Would it? Would there be a way of challenging a proposal that just preserves the existing site as is? Or if someone came forward and said, we just want to use what's there, would they have a clear path?
Yeah, I think I understand your question.
So there's a balance between extremely specific regulations and aspirational strategic principles. And we've tried, as a group, to capture that balance in the redevelopment plan, which is why it has some additional sections that are not standard and some additional backup information that tries to sort of show that feeling a little bit further. But we do feel like they are open enough to meet any of the strategic principles or number of the strategic principles, whether a portion or all of the building is restored or not. So I think what that specifically looks like is, number one, so many additional site investigations need to happen in order to determine what can be saved. Once that determination is made of really, you know, what the building is, what the current status of the building is as being able to be restored. Let's say that a portion of it might not be able to be restored, and Clark could still be opened up, and a connection could still be made between downtown and the riverfront. Let's say that the ground level is not serving a purpose that is going to meet the strategic principles, but maybe the parts that are taller are. There's a number of considerations on this site that whether adaptive reuse or new construction is considered could meet these strategic principles and design regulations. If adaptive reuse is considered, an extreme amount of work would need to be done on the site in order to get it to meet these requirements, but it's not impossible. And if the building is not there and new construction is a possibility, an extraordinary amount of work will need to happen on the site to make these strategic principles possible.
And I'll just say, from the foundation's perspective, I mean, we're willing to consider all options here, but they need to meet the guidelines, and they need to reconnect the site to the city. They need to make downtown better. And so, you know, we're willing to consider everything. I think one of the great things about this plan and what we really need as an organization is flexibility in terms of you know, adaptive reuse versus demolition. you know, adaptive reuse versus demolition. Like we, we need to have that to, before we can put this before developers and, and frankly, for us to, to move forward on it.
I just want to say this is a really complex parcel site. And I just appreciate the proactive approach. As a city, we're used to reactive approaches of people coming to us. So it's nice to hear that we're working together on thinking about this proactively and reimagining what this site could be, whether the building is there intact or parts of it or whatever happens next. So just want to say thank you and that I'm excited to continue those conversations.
I, I was just in with some final comments. I don't have any questions either, but it's just a very exciting partnership. I'm just really appreciative as a citizen of the foundation taking this role to make an additional amazing, hopefully, improvement to the riverfront in the downtown area. I, I had told Miriam, I'd spent a lot of time in the eighties as a young professional in that building. And it's really great to think that something new and vibrant can happen there, whatever form it takes. Do you want to provide us some guidance on the motion? So with that all, I'd like James back up to do the honors of restating or stating the staff recommendation.
We didn't practice this. Just going to read what's on the, on the board. Okay, wonderful. So the staff recommendation is that the planning commission finds said blighting study and redevelopment plan for the 200 South Fourth Street area to be recommended declared as blighted and that the proposed redevelopment plan is in conformity with strategic land use plan, that is the specially mixed use area designation and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan. And therefore adopts the plan and recommends approval to the Board of Aldermen.
I have a motion.
I would like to make a motion.
A second.
I'd like to make the motion that Planning Commission accepts this or recommends approval of this redevelopment plan to the Board of Aldermen with the additional language of, under the urban design section landscaping and sidewalk maintenance, that all street trees require, should we get, should require irrigation? And that in our recommending letter to the Board of Aldermen, that we request an informational presentation from the developer and LCRA prior to completion of design. Prior to completion, design allows to give feedback and maybe make some changes as opposed to if it's already done.
Renew my second. All right. Moved by Commissioner Benton and seconded by Commissioner India.
Aye.
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 Aye. And just a point of order, the staff member who's reading out roll call, it is very difficult to hear you.
Okay, I'll speak louder. Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the zoning text amendment on special residential uses. This is the item that will include a public hearing. If you are here, just pay in a public hearing, if you're here in the room, please be sure you have checked in with Carter. And if you're online, go ahead and put your information in the chat. You'll have two minutes to make any comments and you'll be called on in order to hear. We're going to start first with the PDA staff presentation by Miriam. When also zoning staff.
Thank you. So as Chair Bo has described, this is a zoning text amendment where the purpose is to initiate these changes to the zoning regulations for what our zoning code refers to as special residential uses. With the purpose of addressing barriers in these processes, offering greater clarity in the regulatory process and creating more predictable and standard expectations for applicants and community members, I would add. And the action before the planning commission is to recommend the regulations, to initiate them to the Board of Aldermen so that they can be introduced as legislation, go through the full legislative process and be adopted as law. This is another item that is, I'll say, the product of maybe not as many years of, of work, but still a great deal of hard and collaborative work to sort of confront this challenge. I want to recognize and later invite up Alderman Sonnier, who has really put a lot of time and leadership and effort into addressing this challenge in our city. With that, I am going to dive right into the weeds to make sure that the full picture of what is being proposed in the zoning text amendment is clear to the commissioners and to the public. There will be a public hearing, as Chair Bo has mentioned, and also I believe on with us virtually are members of the zoning section of the building division who provided a lot of insight in this process and can speak to some of the kind of details of process and administrative questions, of course. So to begin, I want to define what are special residential uses. So these are described as a range of unique housing options for community members not adequately served by other housing. So I've listed some of the kinds here, the full list of uses that are defined are included in the resolution. But generally speaking, these are unique housing options, often combining housing with social services and other supports for people not adequately served by other types of housing. Special residential uses and these housing options are an important component of the broader kind of effort to address housing insecurity and the experience of homelessness in our community. So I wanted to bring just a little bit of context about the scale of this challenge and the importance of a diverse range of housing types in St. Louis. Housing insecurity anywhere is like notoriously difficult to measure. But with the data before us, we do know that in August of this year, over 2,000 people self-identified as homeless, including almost 600 people experiencing chronic homelessness. On St. Louis Public School website, it's noted that over 20% of families in the school system are considered homeless or housing insecure. And housing access for people experiencing this housing insecurity can play just a very important and sometimes life-saving role, whether it's relief from extreme weather, escape from domestic violence, and often these spaces are connections to services and other supports that will help them kind of access more stability in their housing situation than otherwise. Special residential uses, you're going to start to see me use this SRU abbreviation. They're currently regulated two ways and two different parts of our code. To open up a special residential use currently, you need to go through the platting petition process, which involves signatures from property owners or registered voters within 500 feet. That process and those regulations are within Title 25 of the Code of Ordinances, which refers to buildings and construction. And I mentioned that in contrast to Title 26, which is the zoning code, which is the planning commission's jurisdiction. So I'm describing platting petition as part of the regulatory context, but that is not part of the planning commission's jurisdiction, though it is an important part of the process. But the other important part of the regulation for special residential uses, of course, are zoning approvals, zoning regulations. Currently, most SRUs are conditional in at least some districts, but there are no clearly stated site requirements or conditions. Shelters, however, are prohibited in all districts in the city of St. Louis. Little bit of context for tonight's action item. I mentioned that Title 25, not subject to planning commission review. Title 26, all changes to the zoning code require planning commission review and recommendation to initiate them into the legislative process. So that's what we're here to talk about. Those who reviewed the staff report and draft resolution know that there's currently no proposal to either remove or reform the platting petition process. But I, I am sharing it as part of the regulatory context for these uses. Members of the commission who were here just over a year ago in this very room knows that in 2023, the city considered a slate of board bills aimed at addressing this issue. And that included a zoning code amendment, which was reviewed and recommended by the planning commission, as well as a bill to remove or several bills to offering different options for removing or reforming the platting petition requirements for special residential uses. There was a great deal of dialogue and deliberation at the Board of Aldermen and at the community. And I've summarized, made an attempt to summarize here, some of the kind of salient points of feedback that were part of that dialogue. Number one, a point of feedback that it's important to treat SRUs as conditional uses rather than permitted by right in all zoning districts. So for those who might remember, the previous recommendation made around this time last year did include SRUs as permitted by right in some districts. That's no longer part of the proposal. Number two, there was a great deal of community concern about eliminating the platting petition requirement and not a clear consensus or direction about the best or most administrable or, you know, even legal way to reform the process. And so, like I mentioned, currently, the idea is to kind of not, not touch that, but address some of the zoning issues. Number three, the importance of increasing a little bit of oversight into the operations of certain special residential uses, because these are uses providing services and housing to some of our community's most vulnerable members. So you will see some mechanisms to do that as part of the current zoning proposal. Number four, some of greater importance placed on methods to avoid concentration of certain special residential uses within neighborhoods. So, you know, concerned that, I mean, it is true currently that special residential uses tend to be concentrated downtown in North City and in some parts of South City. And the proposal that is before the planning commission today has a few ways to kind of avoid kind of further concentration of the, the special residential uses, in large part by establishing shelters and other uses as conditional, but also in some of the site requirements, we'll get there in a moment. Last year, we also did a ton of work, and by we, I mean a global we here, this was a collaborative process. We reviewed the specifically shelter regulations in some other cities to offer some insight into options and maybe even best practices for how we are to regulate these uses in the city of St. Louis. Because like I mentioned, shelters currently are prohibited outright in all zoning districts. So we looked at these six cities selected for a few different reasons. Either they're operating under the state law, the same state laws as us, or they recently updated regulations or they're otherwise kind of similar to St. Louis. And there were a few key findings from that research. So in every city we looked at, shelters are allowed in at least one district and often in several. There were some policies to encourage smaller shelters. That was part of what was considered last year. You, you won't see that necessarily in this, this proposal, but that was a takeaway. No other city had a platting petition process or anything similar that we could decipher. All cities offer clear definitions for shelters and other special residential uses. And all cities have clear site requirements for shelters. So again, you know, St. Louis really is an extreme outlier among the cities surveyed because we outright exclude shelters from all zoning districts currently. Here's a little bit of a comparison table for those who like to read zoning codes. You'll know that this is, that's a joke, guys. You'll know that the, the everybody likes to read zoning codes. I, the purpose of the joke is to acknowledge that it's really hard to compare between cities. Like we do not have the same types of districts and there are lots of ifs, ands and buts about everything. So this is a, take this with a grain of salt, but generally this puts things in context. So you can see how St. Louis, and this refers specifically to shelters and how we stack up with our current regulations. Again, we are an outlier, most cities offering, permitting them by right in some districts and very often conditionally, and again, usually with site requirements. So that's a little bit of background, but where are we today? And what are some of the kind of principles under the draft regulations as they're presented within the resolution? The draft resolution? They've been informed by both research and the community feedback received over the course of the last year through formal legislative hearings and a lot of outreach and community conversation, much, much of which led by Alderman Sonnier. The updated proposal is not aimed at making it easier for special residential uses to open. Instead, it's aimed at creating a more clear and predictable zoning pathway by which they'll be evaluated and permitted to preserve opportunities for community input and to provide the city with some more transparency into shelters and transitional housing facilities and their operation. So the proposed regulations do a few things. Number one, they kind of clear, clean up all of the references through other sections of the code to these uses. Right now, they're kind of scattered all across our code. The design of these proposed regulations is to kind of clean all of that up and move everything into its own new chapter, which would include a plainly stated purpose, clear definitions, a use table that creates a pathway for these uses in all zoning districts, and clearly establish conditions and site requirements that, again, provide clarity and predictability for conditional use permits and their consideration to ensure that shelter operators do have a plan to adequately meet the needs of individuals and families they're serving. And third, to establish some safeguards tailored to the potential challenges associated with these types of uses. So I'll walk through kind of each part of this chapter. I'm not, you're going to start to see a lot of words on these slides. I'm not going to read them all, but I do have it all here for reference and discussion. So number one, the purpose is to regulate the location establishment and operation of these uses, which are unique land uses as kind of previously defined in this presentation, and to provide reasonable restrictions within districts to make sure that they do not compromise the health, safety and general welfare of persons in the district. So that's kind of part one of the chapter. Part two are the definitions, and I've listed these here on several slides. There, there are many and some definitions are long. But the context for them is to create clear, modern definitions that do like properly represent the housing types being regulated in a more modern way. Some of the definitions for these uses currently in our code, well, many are undefined, number one. But number two, many others really are antiquated and don't match kind of the current reality of how these special types of housing are operated regularly. So yeah, here we have a few pages of them. I'll always read the types of uses defined. Boarding house, building official, dormitory, building official, and then later you'll see zoning office. Those are two. Those are not types of uses, but entities that have a role in this process. Dormitory group home, halfway house, rooming house, congregate shelter, single room occupancy shelter. The, having a distinction here with two definitions is something we saw in a lot of other cities' codes. Special residential use kind of a definition for this collection of uses, substance use treatment facility. Substance use treatment facility, support services, transitional housing, and then again zoning office, an entity involved in some of the process elements that are proposed. Number three, should say number three, use table of what's proposed. This is pretty straightforward that these would be conditional uses in all districts. And the rationale is to provide a pathway in all zoning districts subject to a conditional use process, which involves a hearing and Board of Public Service approval or denial. And then again, currently there's no proposal to remove or reform platting petition. A little bit of background on why all districts. Some parts of our city, it, there's not an obvious connection necessarily between the way that parts of our city are zoned and the uses within them currently or their the built environment. A lot of parts of city, for example, zone, single family A or B actually have quite a bit of multifamily housing option. There is a diverse housing stock. So this is an attempt to kind of be consistent with that, allowing for a diversity of housing options within all districts. The third element, well, fourth of this new chapter is clear site requirements. Some that would be for all special residential uses. So these, the intent of that is to communicate upfront to anybody seeking a conditional use permit, what the standards or expectations would be. Rather than, you know, they arrive at a hearing and then are presented with conditions. The idea is to communicate a baseline set of conditions upfront, so people know what to expect and can plan accordingly. It includes a lot of things that are standard conditions applied to uses. That's a lot of what is presented here on the first slide. And then some start to get more specific. So some parking requirements tailored to these uses. Clarifying that all existing facilities are grandfathered and exempt from the provisions of this chapter. And also a kind of new and somewhat expanded spacing requirement again as another mechanism to prevent the concentration of these uses in any one part of any neighborhood. Another component of the site requirements are clearly stated exceptions from the, the platting petition process and other requirements because under state law, in many cases, you know, we simply cannot be regulating these in a manner, for example, that would expose domestic violence survivor facilities to a public process where their location becomes known. Group homes are also protected under state law. And then dormitories just are, are exempt. The, the feeling was that this is kind of a different kind of special residential use. A new additional component of the site requirements is the requirement of an operations plan. So anybody seeking to open just a congregate shelter or a single room occupancy shelter or transitional housing would be required to submit an operations plan before a hearing. And this plan is a required part of the submission to the zoning office and can be made available to others involved in the approvals process as appropriate. So the idea is to kind of offer this as a way to have greater insight into the operations of these facilities. And to make that information available as part of the decision-making process. So many components of this organizational chart, contact information for a representative, estimate a number of beds and population, description of the services to be provided, likes to say, and so on. We can refer back to this as helpful. And again, the building commissioner and/or zoning office are permitted to request the review or insight from other departments that are not required to. But this is a required, required element of the submission to people seeking a conditional use permit. I want to acknowledge a recommended or proposed amendment from, and we can come back to this too, and I'll, I can let Alderman speak to this, but I wanted to offer it here clearly for consideration. But a requested addition to the operations plan, which is a question to collect information as a measure to guard against discrimination, including against LGBTQ community members to the extent possible within the constraints of state and federal law. So this would be a question presented so that it's part of the response. But again, it, it's sensitive to the constraints within state law about whether a decision could be made on this basis, or whether this could be an overt requirement. The use table here, kind of to bring up full circle, I've stacked up the proposed use table associated with the proposed regulations against this city comparison chart. And, you know, again, it would be conditional in all districts, but subject to those site requirements. That's what that asterisk indicates. That is kind of the end of my presentation, but want to do a couple of things here as we kind of move into the public hearings comment. So the, the first is to kind of summarize for the
Hello?
Yes, Alderman Cone?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear us, Alderman Cone?
The folks online aren't able to hear.
Oh, no. Is this better? Can you hear me now?
Uh, I think Christina's texting Alderman Cone. I'll text Rich Bradley.
I bet you loud and clear, you guys.
Never mind. Hi, Rich.
Yeah, Alderman Cone.
Something, yeah. I can hear now.
Great. Got you back. Okay. So the couple of the next things I wanted to do as we move into the public hearing is twofold. I want to kind of recognize for the records some of the written public comment that has been shared with the commission, but I want to not fully read it into the record, but describe it for the record. And then I guess I would like to request that when we open the public hearing that we can invite Alderman Sonnier first to share remarks given all of the worksheet that she's put into this. So first, I'll describe the two letters of concern that we receive from groups or individuals representing the Southampton Neighborhood Association. And they all, all comments had to do with concerns about the conditional use process that it is not one where they receive necessarily proactive notification, challenges in enforcement in the conditional use process. Sometimes uncertainty about the outcomes of the conditional use process. And looking for other pertinent components of this. But yeah, I would say it's really about awareness of hearings and permits. Knowledge of outcomes about conditional use decisions and then challenges in enforcement of conditional uses and the associated conditions. So that is my summary of the two written letters we received. I neglected to, I, I mentioned team members in the zoning section of the building division are on with us. I am sure they'll be very helpful in answering questions, but I do want to, want to offer them an opportunity to kind of jump in and add anything to the context of what these regulations propose. Anything I may have missed?
Thank you, Miriam. I don't think that you missed anything. The only thing that I want to add is, as far as the administration of this, the applicant, just like they are now, would be required to go first through the platting petition process before they would be allowed to apply, to apply for either the building permit or occupancy permit that would trigger the conditional use hearing.
That's right. And I, I think that reminders an important piece of things, especially in light of the concerns expressed in these letters about the conditional use process. Nothing would reach that process until after that platting petition process, which involves signature collection of people in the surrounding area. So with, with that, maybe I'll ask the commission to consider opening a public hearing and then I'll invite Alderman Sonnier to the podium. Motion to open the public hearing.
Summit.
Seconded.
We have a previous role.
Previous role, excellent. Hearing any objections? Previous role. The public hearing is now open. Alderman Sonnier, would you like to speak first?
Okay, hello. I am Alderman Sonnier, and I have the honor of representing the seventh ward in the city of St. Louis. This is so interesting. I'm used to being like, when you have a bill, you're the only one on this side. So having someone go before you and do such a phenomenal job and explain so much of the bill, like Miriam, if you just want to join me. So I don't want to, you know, repeat too much or say things that have already been said. I think, you know, one of the things I say notoriously is that this bill did not fall out of a coconut tree. That it has been a topic of discussion and something that I think all of us experience in a number of ways. And then I just want to start really by expressing, expressing gratitude. I think for months now, myself, as well as the Director of Human Services, Dr. Pearson, as well as Casey Milberg, as well as Miriam Keller, as well as Mary Hart Berman, as well as Mr. Ware. If I'm missing something, please charge it to my head and not my heart. Have all just done like an amazing job and had so many tough conversations around this issue. And I just really want to acknowledge for me, it's been so positive to see a city be willing to have hard conversations, to see us run into barriers, to see us, you know, have to stop and revisit and be willing to do that. And really at the heart of all of our shared interests is a genuine interest in moving our city forward. So I just want to express gratitude for everyone who's done that. And of course I would be remiss. I'm sure Ms. Murda is, is watching, who is my legislative assistant and right hand, who has put her blood, sweat, and tears into this with me and been willing to get back in the ring with me despite, you know, previous barriers. So I just first want to say thank you. I think the bill really just aims to do a couple of things. I love the hashtag all not some. And the reason that I like that is because I think that if a process is good enough for me as an individual, then I would like to think that it's good enough for my neighbor. I think that often when processes and systems are in place, they are usually more difficult and more challenging and also more complicated therefore, especially if it is something that might serve poor folks or lower income or people of color. And so when I learned some of our zoning things, which was a lot of information as a new alder, just learning all the zones, what they mean, what can go where, what the permits were. And when I first learned, actually by watching one of these meetings, that we didn't allow for shelters in a single one of our zoning areas, I was really shocked and really I mean, I want to say I couldn't understand how that come to be, but I think we understand how we have come to be. But I was surprised that it hadn't necessarily been revisited until that time point. And then when I learned that several other forms, what I'd like to say for the public who's watching is sometimes special residential uses sounds really jargon-y. So the way that I've been speaking to community members about it is by saying non-traditional forms of housing. So any form of housing really outside of rent or mortgage are really included in this bill. And then non-traditional forms of housing often are combinations of housing as well as social services. And so learning all of these things, hearing all this information, newly elected, stars in my eyes, heart pumping, was very bold and, you know, filed three very bold bills that certainly did get the conversation going. Which is a great start, a great start. And I learned so much. Honestly, I would say like, of all the things I've done in my life, and I've graduated the top of my class consistently. I, I've, you know, I think I've done some hard things, but this has been the hardest thing that I think I've ever had to do. And it is not just because of the folks I was dealing with. It was also because of myself. I think as a leader, especially someone who had just come into the public spotlight, there was a lot for me to learn. How do you go about having conversations? How do you talk about an issue like this without having a sense of moral support superiority? How do you put yourself in the, in the feet, in the position of others and hear what they're saying and hear what they think? I think all too often, we dismiss critics as, around this issue as NIMBYs, as people who don't care. But a great thing about being a legislator and someone who gets to interact with her community regularly and even go all around the city is I've learned, like, no, actually this is an issue a lot of people care about. We might have different ideas on how you go about doing it, but I've not heard a single person say they don't think that this is an issue. And I've not heard a single person say that they're upset that the city is even having the conversation. And so that is just for context purposes of about a year ago. And I like to say, because our meetings are public, that in about April of this year, I literally, after I got done crying on the floor because of Bill failed around this issue, I wiped my tears and walked right over to the mayor's office and was like, I, I want to revisit this. And they were very receptive and very open to the, the conversation. And so from that point in time, we embarked in a working group, revisited the conversations, we talked about what worked. Except this time I had the advantage of having had sat through hours of public comment, of having attended. I, I mean, at this point I've been to a meeting in every single ward in the city of St. Louis to talk about this bill and talk about this topic. So this time I understood a lot more of what people were looking for, of what the genuine concerns for, of what my colleagues were interested in. And so that is how you get to the proposal that is in front of you all. I think this bill, something that I really talk about and center is it is not just about making this easier for one group of people. It is an acknowledgement that when we have processes that are unclear, that are complicated, that is hard for residents to understand and follow. It is hard for providers to understand and follow. It is hard for all of us because we're not even clear. And so for me, what I took away was, okay, let me pump my brakes a little bit, and I'm not known for being an incrementalist. But, you know, in this case, let me pump my base a little bit, and maybe we need to go back to the basics of this issue and figure out, like, where do you start? And so every time I would explain the bill, I would have to start by saying, well, you apply, and then you get denied, and then you go to the Board of Adjustment. And then people would just look at me like very confused from there. So I was like, okay, maybe the zoning is a place to start. And so this bill aims to do a couple of things. Number one, clear definitions. I think as a legislator, I can't express how important that is because if we're not clear on what we're talking about, we're not really having a conversation. And so one of the things that used to be the case, or I guess is currently the case until this is passed, is that we refer to domestic violence shelters as women's battered shelters. Very outdated language. I think also a little harmful because women are not the only group of folks who are battered and who experience harm in domestic violence relationships. And so we really took some time to align some of the definitions up with what is in the, the federal, federal definitions for HUDs. The other thing that I think is really important in this process is the conditional use process. As an alder who literally just testified twice today at a conditional use hearing for two different things, I can say that this is a process that city residents are very familiar with. Now that doesn't mean that they don't have their issues or the, the process is a perfect one, but it means that just by making this something that most city residents are familiar with, by making this something that usually every alder gets notification for, I think we're going in the right direction. And the great thing about the conditional use process is it's not permanent. So you're not saying yes, you're not saying no. It really creates a, the opportunity for a conversation that says, well, maybe, but here's what I would like to feel comfortable with this within my neighborhood and within my community, which I think is going to be really great and something that residents really appreciate. And then the other thing that I think this bill really does is oversight. One of the things that I've really also been shocked by was learning that right now the city's relationship to these non-traditional forms of housing are really only if we are funding them, are we allowed to have accountability for them? So there are times where we've had facilities operating, we might not find out that they exist or have a means of accountability until something goes wrong. So until someone has an overdose or until there's some public safety incident, we don't necessarily have the grounds to go within. And so when I, when we were working on this bill, we talked a lot about what does it look like to bring the city in relationship with facilities, irregardless of whether or not we're funding them. And now that they have to apply for zoning and then do the operational plan, that information is something that any department has access to. So should, you know, it could be the Director of Human Services, but it could also be Public Health or any other, it could be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Any entity that takes a curiosity within an applicant Or any other, it could be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, any entity that takes a curiosity within an application that they see. That wants any information will be able to get that information from this process. Um, and I think that's that's really important. I think also it came from hearing a lot of residents say, well, a provider tried to open up in my community and it came in front of me and I asked them how many people they were going to serve. They couldn't give me a clear answer. Or I asked them, what services are they going to offer? They couldn't tell me. I asked them, you know, what's the standard length of stay? So literally took some of those things that I observed from meetings I attended and also from residents. And put it together in an operational plan. And then, uh, the Building Division was also, as well as Dr. Pearson helpful with saying, here are other things that you might want to ask for on the front end. And I think that information is going to be critical because that means when neighbors are being talked to and being asked, can we get your signature? Or, you know, how do you feel about this conditional use? They're not talking about speculation. They've got something in front of them that makes it clear what the provider's intentions are. And therefore, they can be clear about what conditions in which they would like to open, uh, the facility. And then I think also something that I heard from providers all over, um, was just, we are not sure what your process is. Um, we are not sure exactly how this works. And so we have at times had to find loopholes in order to open these facilities. Loopholes that for public officials are nightmares for us because loopholes are not transparent. Loopholes are not consistent. And it can even make me, make it difficult for you to support something that you might support, but because you're not following a process, because I can't point. My constituents to something, I'm kind of put in a position almost from the beginning, that's just very challenging and makes it unlikely that I would be able to. Uh, support the in the institution. And so if I was just summarizing this bill, I would say like, the real goal and a real objective is to have. A clear, transparent, consistent process that centers community voice. And that mandates transparent transparency. Um, I think those are things that are all important. Those are things that when I went around to neighborhood meetings. Even if I got, you know, by start, folks were yelling at me. By the time I would get done talking, I would see people in their head, you know, nodding along. I don't think there's a single room I've went into and presented and haven't had someone come up to me afterwards and just say, you know, um. I really appreciate you coming and being willing to say this, you know, I really like this portion. And then all, I forgot a key part of legislation was the density language. Uh, the density language was, I think is also really key because there are communities in our city that are rightfully saying. It's not that we're opposed to these facilities. We just do think that every community should have a role to play in this. Uh, we want a mixed income community like everybody else wants. Um, we don't want the oversaturation of anything in our community. And I think that's really important when we're talking about where we're going as a city and talking about equity. And so the density language is really for those communities. Particularly who are downtown and who are on the north side that kind of repeated to me over and over again that they were scared that their communities were going to become. A super service center. Um, and so I think this, this language makes it clear that, you know, we don't have the goal of oversaturating it. And we do understand the historical context of concentrating these resources, uh, particularly in, uh, people of colors communities. And so we want to address that on the the front end. Uh, I just, it's such a nice honor to be in front of you all. Um, I again, just want to thank everyone, um, including the President's Office. I'm sorry, Director Garmendi, I forgot to name you. Uh, Cecilia, if you're watching you as well, um, for just consistently showing up to the table and, uh, having this conversation. Even many of my colleagues who I've met with and had conversations with before. I would say legislator hat aside, just as a 28 year old black woman who was born and raised here. It makes me extremely proud to live in this city, um, to know that we have leaders who are willing to be collaborative, who are willing to. Address head-on hard issues and who are willing to come up with solutions that truly are to the benefit of all. Thank you.
Another reminder, if you are either online or in the room and you have not given your name to Michelle or entered it on the into the chat, please do so. We have one speaker as of now, Jeremy. Rapus, thank you.
All right, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, um, here in the city of St. Louis. Hopefully people can hear me all right. Um, I want to thank you all. I want to thank, um, Alderwoman, uh, Sonier. I hope I pronounced that right. And I'm, I'm here to speak as a member of, uh, Red Bike Outreach. I am currently, um, a resident of Franz Park over, uh, in the Dogtown area. And I and a group of people go out every Monday and we do street outreach. So, and most of our route. It goes, uh, from South City through Soulard, Lafayette Square, and then, um, downtown in the near north area. And, um, the need is clear to be seen. It is. You know, um, I would say there's an increase in the amount of unhoused people who are in need of services. Who are in need of clothing and food, you know, the basics, and even a sympathetic ear every now and then. And, uh. What Alderwoman Sonier is talking about makes a big stride towards helping people throughout the city. And I am a little nervous speaking, so if you bear with me and I appreciate your patience. What? We need, we need a, a process. And I'm learning, I'm learning today that we do have shelters that exist. Due to loopholes and things like that. There isn't a, a process that's, you know, currently. Very transparent. And. To make great, you know, it makes great strides to have a process that is understandable by people who want to provide these services. And people who want to avail themselves of these services. And these are services that. You know, in a pinch. Particularly during the winter and the high summer, people have, will have better access to shelter, more organized shelters, shelters that provide. You know, in a more meaningful way. Shelters and and the community and and community feedback is important as well. And. Considering the variety of different sort of communities and neighborhoods throughout the city. And the, and again, every day I see people at, I see people at the intersections. I see people. Throughout and people with no options. It, it'd be a wonderful thing in, if in our neighborhood, we had a process that's understandable by everybody. That is accessible by everybody in the community. To allow smaller shelters instead of warehousing type shelters to exist. And in these services to help people transition away from being unhoused. That's the most important aspect to me. And as an advocate for the unhousing, as somebody who does this street outreach in person. I support what Alderman, Alderwoman, uh, Sonier is proposing. And that we get it together as a city. And acknowledge this, that this issue exists and that we've got to do something about it in an organized and collaborative manner. And that's all I really have to say about that because I'm about to pass out. So, uh, thank you all. I appreciate you hearing me speak.
Thank you.
We have one on line.
Oh, we have one on line.
Just want to quickly acknowledge, it's really hot in this room. We have a little bit of water over there. The thermostat's just lying to us. But if anybody at any time commissioners or guests need water, please, um, take what you need. Sorry to interrupt.
Rachel online.
Rachel, would you give us your full name and who you're representing?
Did you say Rachel? It's a little hard to hear.
Yes, sorry. Yes, please go ahead with your comments.
Okay, thanks. Uh, my name is Rachel Hurtado. I live in Ward Seven and I'm here to express my support for, um, Alderwoman Sonier's proposed legislation. Regarding these special residential uses. Um, this critical piece of legislation addresses an urgent longstanding need in our community for transitional and supportive housing. There is a long and fraught history of St. Louis city zoning laws having served to disappear the most vulnerable people in our city. Pushing out and increasing divestment from neighborhoods made up of black, low-income and immigrant families. The history of racial covenant laws directly impact which cities of our, which areas of our city are thriving today and which are scarce of resources. There's too much red tape right now that prevents new housing providers from opening and operating homes for our vulnerable neighbors. Who have substance use disorders, untreated mental illness, and face unimaginable barriers to finding a safe home in our city as it stands now. We know that Housing First works and healing can't happen for folks who don't have a safe place to lay their head at night. The path to implement this approach is complex and spans a lot of different kinds of legislative and cultural changes that we need to make. And this is one critical step in moving forth with this approach in our city and away from criminalizing solutions that are being reinforced on the federal level in our country. We can't arrest our way out of the unhoused crisis or the opioid epidemic. The power is in our elected officials' hands and our city officials' hands to change our city, to be a site of transformational change for St. Louisans from all walks of life. This amendment is a compromise, a new approach in, uh, response, direct response to the opposition from the plat petition bill earlier this year. It would repeal the existing discriminatory ban, ensure more housing opportunities for everyone. And this proposed limit on the number of SRUs in specific areas will further help to address the current concentration of shelters in certain wards like in North City. New SRU operators will be required to submit an operations plan to outline how they'll meet resident needs, how many residents will be served. The population that that operator aims to serve. All of this guarantees that those facilities provide high-quality services and support. And finally, this legislation protects, um, approved shelter and transitional facilities by BPS, allowing them to continue operating and expanding. As an important first step in the Housing First approach, I urge y'all to pass this vital amendment to address the current prohibition on SRUs. Provide clearer regulations and ensure quality care and right relationship to the surrounding communities where these facilities can be. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, oh, one more.
Kevin Strauss.
Kevin Strauss, you ready to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, my name is Kevin Strauss. I am president of the Southampton Neighborhood Association. Um, I did submit my, uh, comments, um, yesterday via email, or maybe it was Monday afternoon via email. I'm hoping that you all have those and have had a chance to read those over. Um, we are very much involved in conditional use hearing processes in the city within our neighborhood. Um, and I would say that the two points that I want to just reemphasize based on, uh, the comments that I submitted earlier. Is that, um, conditional use hearing is a process that the city follows. However, it is not very transparent to, um, the residents of a neighborhood. Um, not without asking for sunshine law request type of thing. Um, my other, uh, issue is that, uh, when it goes through the zoning and conditional use. The older person's input seems to be weighted a lot more in the decision-making. Of, um, of a business or anything else that has conditional uses attached to it. And, uh, lastly, that I would like to, uh, make a comment on is. I don't know, I don't believe this bill, um, or this process goes far enough. Um, it talks about conditional uses. Um, my issue that I have as for the neighborhood as well is if those conditional uses are broken. Who at the city level or at an administrative level, um, will be policing those? Um, broken conditional uses and who will be enforcing, um, those conditional uses on a daily, weekly, monthly basis? My hope is that it's not intended that we just have conditional uses, no one's enforcing them. And that there is no repercussions for breaking those conditional uses for a neighborhood. Um, will have no other recourse but just to endure. So that is my, um, comments and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any, any else waiting to speak? No, so with no other person's asking to speak, we would like to close the, um, public hearing. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Exactly, exactly. Previous role.
Any objections to previous role? Objections? The public meeting has, or the public hearing has been closed. Right now, questions from the, um, commissioners. Should we start again with people who are online? Any questions? Maybe I needed affirmative. No questions? Just to be sure you can hear us. Okay, all right. Um, starting with the commissioners in the room.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to break in. I'm listed in the chat to speak.
Thank you for breaking in. Uh, we technically closed the public hearing. Can we go ahead and do this?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Um, bear with us one minute. We're going to reopen the public hearing to hear your comments.
Thank you.
Um, you have a motion.
Previous role.
Any objections to previous role? No? All right, the public hearing is open. Thank you very much. And could, uh, could we have your name and who you're representing?
Ms. Donna, you're welcome to, um. Share your, your comments in the public hearing now. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
My name is Donna Auga. I am not representing an organization, although I may be representing a, a group of neighbors later. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I do want to highlight a few concerns. I was a little bit surprised that, uh, public housing usually is located. Or recommended to be located by a high-frequency public transit line, and this is not a site requirement. So that pretty much surprised me that that wasn't included. Um, the other thing, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but didn't that PDA said they weren't going to sell alcohol on the premises? Uh, should we not add opioids to that? I mean, if we're concerned about alcohol, I would think we'd be also be concerned about drug use in these, uh, facilities. Um, another concern I want to bring back up, back up that Kevin mentioned was on conditional use hearings. When we go before the zoning officer, we give oral testimony that all of us who attend can hear. Any written testimony that's provided is not available to the public. We don't see it. Once the testimony is given, the hearing ends. We do not know what the decision-making process is at that point. That creates the staff recommendations that are sent to the Board of Public Service. We actually don't know what those recommendations are. And I would like to suggest. That we should know for the special residential uses at a minimum, what those recommendations are. It needs to be shared with the public. Um, now my main concern is the potential disruption when we have dis densely populated owner-occupied neighborhoods. Those will be zones A and B that are opening to conditional use for the special residential uses. Now, this has the potential to change the character of these areas. They're stable because they're densely populated. They have high owner occupancy rates. So, and that creates long-term residence. When we bring in short-term or transient occupants, it can create instability. So instead of a full zoning hall overhaul in zones A and B, I believe we should take a more gradual approach. And introduce a mix of uses in those areas rather than making blanket changes across the entire neighborhood. Now, I've looked at what the owner occupancy rates are in, in a select group of neighborhoods. It wasn't all seventy-five of them or whatever. Um, there are some high owner occupied neighborhoods in North City. And there are some in Southwest City. And I'm, I'm looking at anything more than half. And I think if they have stable neighborhoods, which the high owner occupancy rate would, would sort of suggest. Then I would think we wouldn't open up all of the As and Bs all across the city to these new uses. I think we should gradually try to incorporate it because I do understand the effort being made to integrate. Open up probably safe neighborhoods to more housing that's a little more diverse, that has more, uh, income levels introduced. I think we can probably tolerate that. I'm just not sure you can tolerate it across hundreds and hundreds. Of owner-occupied households in one neighborhood. That's kind of all I had. Um, that's kind of all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Um, no. Yep, any, any issues or complaints? No? Nope, alright.
So moved.
Previous role.
Alright, the, the public hearing is closed. So, sorry, no objections to previous role, I should say. Alright, public hearing is closed. Alright, now questions from the commissioners? We're gonna start back with the commissioners who are online. Any questions from any of you? Asking once, twice? Alright, we'll go to the commissioners in the room. Okay.
Uh, not too much question, but just a comment. And uh, thanks again for all the work of all the people involved in bringing this back before the planning commission. Um, as the policy director, I've had a maybe front row seat. Uh, sometimes been part of the problem um, to the journey for this uh, this legislation. And I wanted to second my, or reiterate my thanks to the alderwoman, uh, Sanye for championing this bill. I think that's one of the pieces that I learned about as a newer planning commissioner last year. Is that the planning commission will make some recommendations based on expert advice from planning and zoning. And, but then it's the alderperson that has to defend and champion the, what we recommend through the board, through innumerable public hearings and community meetings. And I think this is an unusual piece of, of zoning text amendment because it's about not creating more restrictions. Um, it's about creating more opportunity and that's um, something that's a lot. Uh, that's just more unusual um, for, for, for us to be doing here at the planning commission and through the Board of Aldermen. And so um, while I liked the previous, the previous recommendations that we made. Um, uh, I'm in support of, you know, supporting smaller shelters and having permitted uses. Um, I'll accept this. Um, and I support all the efforts that went into making this um, happen. Um, and uh, I definitely want to just preview and offer my thanks again to Alderman Sanye for um, coming back and into the boxing ring um, on this issue. And it's not, uh, I don't think if she was not an alderwoman, we would have a champion for this type of uh, zoning text amendment at the board. So I want to thank her for that. Um, I also just want to make a comment that um, from learning um, the past year about, you know, going through the initial drafting and hearing this through the planning commission and then seeing how it played out at the Board of Aldermen. Um, and in the community was very much a learning experience for me as a policy director. And um, me really built my empathy skills for members of the Board of Aldermen and the relationship between the Board of Aldermen and the planning commission. So very much this bill and this discussion um, has influenced um, the next agenda item after this. Um, about clarity between the relationship between the planning commission, the Board of Aldermen, and providing clarity on our procedures. Uh, for when there is inevitably, especially in high-interest topics, inevitably uh, amendments made before the Board of Aldermen and committee based on uh, committee, uh, community feedback and of course, all the expertise that alderpeople bring from their different roles and responsibilities. So um, thanks, thank you all for being part of this.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have some. Uh, so first I want to uh, thank alderwoman Sanye as well. Uh, mainly for your diligence through this process or stick-to-itiveness. I don't think it's a boxing ring, but it's more of a perfection process. So I like to see things go back and forth a few times just so that we can get it right. Um, and I do think it's important to have a champion who's uh, staying with it. To make sure that we can't, we are afforded the opportunity to do perfect, perfect whatever we're putting forward. So thank you for that. Uh, and no matter what the outcome is here, I hope that you continue to stay with it through the perfection process or experience. Um, I do have some questions. Uh, first, where it notes, uh, off-street parking for employees. I was curious why there's no consideration of any parking for residents. Um, I'm just thinking through uh, some of the communities that I do my community organizing or development work in. And there are oftentimes frustrations with uh, parking of authorized or too many authorized or unauthorized residents in air quotes uh, at certain facilities, especially in heavily residential areas. Uh, also uh, doing my community organizing in a in a few neighborhoods that do have a high unhoused population, I do know that those people do have cars. And oftentimes, those are their, their homes. Uh, so when they frequent these SRUs, I believe they're gonna bring their cars with them. So uh, just curious if we can uh, add some consideration for that. Another question, uh, it notes that in the operations plan, the operator is to note other um, uses or activities that will take place. Uh, such as the, I mean, the support services that will take place in the facility. I was wondering, how are those things regulated or how are we confirming that there are appropriate facilities for those particular activities or functions? And at what point do uh, does the degree of those activities sort of change the, the permitted use that's being requested or the use that's being requested? Um, I mean, for example, if I want to start an SRU that has two people in it and I'm gonna provide a whole slew of support services. Isn't there a chance that it could just become a facility for those support services and not the residential uses that it was originally uh, intended? Uh, so how do we sort of govern or oversee that process? And then my last question is, I was wondering if there were any assessments done of the burden of oversight or the cost of oversight and the existing capacity of whatever agency or department we um, sort of um, assign that oversight responsibility to. That's it.
I can start by offering my best answers or thoughts on those three points, but Mary, feel free to jump in, and then others who are part of this um, collaboration, feel free to jump in as well. On parking, um, for residents or users of the ser- of the service. Yeah, it may not be fully baked into there. One recommendation for how it could be accommodated is maybe not as a uh, requirement. But maybe a component of the operations plan, it's like, you know, maybe it depends on the service provider and who they anticipate will be using the services. And maybe it will just kind of depend on the site. Part of why I say that, and again, this is my best thinking on the spot, others can jump in, is that if it's a requirement, that is often one of the types of things in our zoning code that will trigger the need for a variance, which would change the kind of body at which these items are heard. And I don't know if we should, we should like necessarily like raise the likelihood of these items going that variance route rather than remaining in the conditional use process. But maybe requested information in the operations plan could be a way to just gain some insight and ensure providers are thinking that through.
Well, we're got, just on the first question you had about the parking for residents. Um, I think one of the challenges with adding um, any prescriptive requirement is that of course, the population being served by special residential uses is extremely variable. And um, you know, like dormitories, obviously students don't all have cars. Um, and it'd be kind of a, they, I mean, some, I guess. Yeah, yeah, but it's not like uh, for the street. Street parking or parking lot, parking garage. But I just, the, the part, the population being served um, for uh, the variety of uh, there is a lot of variety in the category of special residential uses, but I think one of the thinkings was is that the population being served are non-traditional. They don't necessarily, uh, unlike regular residential where you're pretty much, you can predict pretty well how many cars people will have. Um, there wasn't that same level of predictability with uh, short, like uh, shelters and kind of where it's, it's presumed that they're gonna it's not gonna be like long-term housing. Um, there's gonna be a lot of different people moving in and out of the alterment circumstances. So I think one of the challenges is how would you even predict how many um, cars that population might need?
It's based on amount of days. Based on the amount of days available.
Yeah, so having a predictor, predictor, but I think it's something like if it becomes problematic, we return to it.
Well, it could. I'm not supposed to.
That's. I was just saying.
I'm, I'm just thinking, uh, I, I, I think I agree with you that being prescriptive about it may not be the best thing. But also here, C-language in here about uh, the operators required to not have any, not receive any like nuisance complaints. So what if the nuisance complaint becomes, there are too many people parking over here? Uh, then we sort of put them in a catch-22 um, and puts them at risk of losing their permit, I can say permit, or conditional use. So again, I don't have the answer in answering the question. I'm just curious if we can give it more thought.
Questions or comments on this in the room?
Uh, before we move on, sorry, can I request if Mary Hart Burton is still on the line, if she could respond to some of Commissioner Williams' concerns? Sorry, Mary, this is Grace.
Yes, hi Grace, I'm here. Um, so yes, in uh, regard to the parking, we already in the zoning code do allow for some reduction of parking for some of the special residential uses. Um, and then in regard to comparing that to the public nuisance. Um, that site requirement refers to a specific ordinance that lays out a public nuisance letter that you would get after a certain number of phone calls and all that. So it wouldn't be like someone could just make one phone call about parking and all of a sudden that would trigger a public nuisance letter. Um, someone could make that one call, but then that notice is gonna go to the neighborhood improvement specialist who then has a relationship with their neighborhood people and works with them through the problem properties. But I don't see parking being something that would cause the issuance of a public nuisance letter.
I think those are good points. Another thought occurred to me that in the conditional use process, based on the specific site, the specific use being proposed, there is an opportunity to add additional con- conditions that could address parking. So that's, that's one thought. And also your question about the capacity for oversight, I wanted to address. The way that requirement of an operational, operations plan is written and the way it's kind of contemplated and it, and its use by the city, it doesn't place obligations on city departments to um, kind of track or enforce because that is really a whole other conversation. What it does do is make the information available in this decision-making process and then collect information that can guide other you know, service planning, supporting, uh, even regional conversation around this topic. Um, so that, that was kind of, that's how it's treated. It doesn't place obligations on city departments to conduct that oversight, rather it provides the opportunity to um, kind of respond to issues that emerge in this, in the decision-making process.
In response to that, are we considering who will carry the responsibility? And are we also making sure that they are staffed up or have the capacity to, to do that? Or are we just expecting them to serve in that function without any additional support or resources?
Well, maybe put a different way, this doesn't create any expectations for uh, action based on any information in an operations plan. So there aren't specific functions that this creates an expectation would need to be provided by any city department. And that, that was intentional because I think at this time, the and I'll try not to, this is a very complicated issue that had a lot of discussion, but I think the ability of the zoning process to guide those responsibilities of other departments, I think we're trying to kind of create a little bit of a boundary there. So collect the information, but not place any new requirements or operational responsibilities on city departments.
And to be clear, I'm not asking us to place any requirements. I'm just asking, through this process, has anyone assessed what, what will be required once this is in there?
Miriam, this is Evan Winkler. Can I make a comment about kind of enforcement? Alright, so um, my name's Evan Winkler. I work for the zoning office. Um, currently we have what would typically be described as reactive zoning inspection. So we get a concern or complaint. Typically, it comes from an alderperson or neighborhood association, sometimes individuals. Um, and we'll go and inspect if they have a conditional use permit because they've gotten these conditions or if they have a variance with conditions. There are some communities across the country that have what they call proactive zoning inspectors. Um, that is not something we are set up to do currently, um, or have the capacity to do at this point. Um, but I would say there are pros and cons to both. And probably one of the biggest cons of proactive zoning inspections is that they have a tendency to um, areas that may be lower income or immigrant families have, it, it tends to affect them more heavily than it would uh, the rest of the populations in the city. So um, it's not something that hasn't been ignored. Um, but it's the process that's outlined in this legislation is based on our current uh, reactive zoning inspections.
Just a quick thing I would add is, I, I think this will be a topic in the zoning code rewrite and review is, you know, figuring out what are the best practices, what are the options, what do we have capacity for? I think with the current volume of conditional uses and just kind of conditions out there in our current like zoning approvals process. Um, it's just tough, like the zoning can spend a lot of time managing variances and kind of like, there's just a lot of operational responsibility with that. If we get the volume of those discretionary approvals processes down, that could open up some options, but still it doesn't mean we have all the capacity in the world to do that. And as Evan described, there are pros and cons even to that more proactive approach.
And again, I just want to clarify, my question was more tailored toward, are we at least aware or are approaching this with some intelligence about what additional responsibility or burden comes with it? That's it. I don't have an opinion on it.
I'm happy to chime in. I'm, yes, we've had many conversations, not only with zoning or planning, but with Department of Human Services, Health Department, how this is gonna impact all of the departments. I think the tough response back to you is that we don't have this process right now. And so it's tough to give you a clear answer on how much more capacity this is gonna take for our staff. When we don't know yet, if we were to make these changes and it passes at the Board of Aldermen, how this will impact people who may be interested in operating smaller shelters. people who may be interested in operating smaller shelters because of this, going back to that shelters are not a prohibited use. And we have a very challenging cumbersome process for anyone to open a new shelter in a process that is clear. So no one's not trying to give you an answer. I think it's just a tough that we're being honest that it's an unknown until it happens. But if it becomes very burdensome in any way, I can commit that the mayor's office will be in communications with the staff of what support is needed for this to be successful for the community as well as the staff. So again, we're not, not trying to answer it, but I, I think the concern is real. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from this end?
Would this create any surprises or complexities for existing shelters, kind of the operations compliance?
They're ground clovered. I mean, I, I think well, Mary or Evan please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if they were to seek a new permit for a significant expansion or something like that, then some of these things might kick in, but otherwise.
All right. Questions on this in the table?
All right. So first, just a comment, I want to thank all of our guests that came to speak with us and participate in this process. I know all of us here at this table are giddy at zoning talk all the time. But for community members that don't share that, that love, I know it's a, it's a big ask to come and take part in a two and a half, three hour meeting to discuss this stuff. So appreciate you coming out, joining us online. I appreciate Alderwoman Sonier for leading this discussion as well. Just a, a quick comment, then a couple of quick technical questions. One, I want to say that as an architect, I'm a big believer that any types of these types of housings, given the right design, and sometimes yes, given a good operations plan can fit into any type of neighborhood. Regardless of its character or density or population, I think that is a design and operations issue. So I'm glad to see this approach being, being, taking place. But I also want to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of the concerns that I think we're hearing from the community, even if, you know, these shelters operate flawlessly and have solid operations and what's happening at that specific site is, is not problematic at all that this is a population that does have higher percentages of folks experiencing substance abuse or mental illness. And I think there's anxiety from community members about what happens once they disperse from these communities out into the neighborhoods, right? So we're not legislators here, but it's good to hear that the additional conversations about providing services to these folks outside of those shelters and, and finding ways to alleviate some of those concerns in the community. Cause I think that's going to be a key piece to making this, this successful. It's not just the zoning part, it's the services part. So want to make sure that, that, that's heard. Couple of technical questions. One is in regards to dormitories. And this is just a, a language thing. I know that the density exception is listed in the legislation. But I am concerned about the sentence at the very end that says it's located within the boundaries on a designated campus, not less than 30 acres. And I'm wondering what happens if a university, say SLU or even Rankin, who I don't think has a 30 acre campus, wants to build a dormitory that would be outside of their technical campus boundary, maybe two blocks off from campus, for example. Would this hinder that? And why is there sort of that designation for campus at all?
I can speak to that. So when we originally made changes to the bill in regard, regard to dormitories, we did do a survey around the city. I don't believe that Rankin was included in that. But 30 acres was the amount of land that all of the institutions that existed. The feeling was if we had the dormitories on the campuses, they probably didn't need the additional scrutiny of the platton petition. We could certainly visit that number of 30 acres if we think there are other institutions to answer your question about if they wanted to build it outside of the boundaries of their campus, then they would be subject to the platton petition. But that's how it's now, and that's how it would be in the new legislation as it's written.
This is Evan again, and just to add to what Mary's saying. That language is taken directly from chapter 25, so the building code. So part of this was to align so that the definitions matched and we didn't have mismatching of interpretations.
Okay. I, I think that still might be a little bit of an issue, especially as it comes to perhaps Rankin's case. I know they do have, I believe, at least one dormitory building as part of that campus and it's a small campus. So my other technical question was just to clarify, remind me, what do we designate Airbnbs as? Are they a a, one of these?
They are in a separate chapter and they are considered short-term runoffs.
Got it. So they
Rest in this board bill.
So they wouldn't be subject to any of these density requirements there. Okay. Wanted to make sure. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I do want to go back to staff time and that I think one thing we always forget is the amount of time the zoning staff needs to spend with Board of Adjustments in the variance process. And that is a lot of time that Evan and Mary could talk about at length of what that is. So us obviously you're gonna know where I am, us helping pass this out of the planning commission today to offer an opportunity for the Board of Aldermen to create a path that is clear and honest and easy for people to understand how to engage with opening a shelter will make it better for staff and that this will make it clear for staff also to communicate with anyone who is interested in opening a shelter in the city of St. Louis and that morally, I think Alderwoman Sonier is championing a really important issue that the city of St. Louis not allowing shelters to be a prohibited use, in my personal opinion, should have never happened. And so this is us course correcting that this population is important to St. Louis, it deserves to be served. And that we should be correcting that together. And of course, I know that this is complicated. Unhoused individuals aren't a monolith in who they are and what their experiences are and why we need to offer the opportunity for conditional use to exist everywhere in the city. Cause I think doing quick math here as we're sitting here, I think we forget and Alderwoman Sonier can back this with data and I'm sure she'll talk about it when, if this passes out today of how many unhoused unhoused individuals are actually children. And that's about 15% if I did the quick math correctly from the 2024 pit count. And that children deserve to live close to their schools and we know where schools are located in our city and those are potentially in single family zoned areas. So I recommend, I commend you for everything you're doing. This is a tough issue to champion. And so I hope that we as a planning commission today can help pass this out.
Other questions or comments from the commissioners?
All right, this is Alderman Cone. Hello.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary, I just want to
You muted yourself, Alderman Cone.
I did not mute myself. Someone just pressed my doorbell and it rang on my phone here. So sorry. So Mary, at the beginning of your remarks, you said that the platen petition process would still be required?
Yes.
The changes that we're voting on here would not change the requirement of the applicant needing to go through a platen petition process. So this is essentially, once they go through the platen petition process, then it would be considered a conditional use in all of the zones.
Yes.
And then one of the items that I discussed with Alderwoman Sonier, and I'm, I'm so concerned about this is, you know, the conditional use, you know, process is a little bit flawed and, and my perspective, just because, you know, generally speaking, the city will post something on like a in front of the
Can't hear what the Alderman's saying, if anyone else can.
You know, in this case, a special residential, these will but aside from that, there's not really a, a notification to the residents of the neighborhood that someone is applying for a condition.
Alderman Cone, we're, we're having some problems with connectivity and we can't understand. We actually couldn't understand the meat of what you were saying. So would you mind repeating that? Oh, Alderman Cone, that was a good idea. Could you put your question in the chat? Just because we're having connectivity issues?
Sure.
We can hear you now.
Okay. So I, my, my question was, you know, around the conditional use process. In a prior iteration of this, you know, I believe when it came up last session with Alderwoman Sonier, one of the suggestions was to include a a notification, like a, a postcard that would go out once they apply for the conditional use that would list the date and time of the conditional use meeting and a way for neighbors to connect or send a letter of support or letter of opposition to the zoning department. Is that something that we can consider before us tonight?
At this time, I don't think I have the authority to commit to that because that would require more resources.
But there would be an, with the platen petition process, all platen petition processes do have the postcard requirement, don't they?
No, with the platton petition process, they come into our office and they get a plat map that shows the area that they have to get signatures from. And then they get the voter registration list from the Board of Election Commissioners. Then they go out and they knock on doors and collect those signatures. Then they submit the signatures back to our office and then it takes some time for us to validate those signatures and let them know if they have 51% or greater. Once they meet that test, then they would be allowed to apply for a building permit or an occupancy permit. And that is what would trigger the conditional use hearing. So they first have to get through the platton petition. And we have many people that apply now for these uses that never make it to the Board of Adjustment or the conditional use hearing because they never make it through the platton petition. So they don't get that far.
Okay. And then my other question, do we have Dr. Pearson in the room? Or, I mean, Grace, maybe as a member of the administration, you'd be able to answer this. But, you know, I, I have some pretty grave concerns around discriminatory practices. A lot of the organizations that operate shelters are generally religiously affiliated. And, you know, I have had members from the trans community, you know, share with me that they've been turned away from shelters because of their gender identity or expression. And so one of the conversations that I've had, you know, with Alderwoman Sonier over, you know, the past two sessions now is incorporating language. So I'm glad that we've included that question and the operational plan. But there's not really, you know, we do have a nondiscrimination ordinance on the books that includes gender identity and expression. And it includes it in places of public accommodation. Why would we not just as part of that operational plan, require them to affirm that they would be acting in accordance with our city's nondiscrimination ordinance?
Wasn't that amendment proposed as part of this?
No, the amendment is to insert a question asking if they need an exception. Or if they will be. It's not requiring them to do so.
Yeah, I, I think his question is, could we go further? And I, I believe this was a discussion around some kind of legal questions that I, I wasn't party to. So I, I don't want to misspeak and I'm looking around to see if anybody else, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, Alderman Cone, I didn't talk to Casey Milberg about this unfortunately before coming here to know who exactly she talked to to help work with Alderwoman Sonier and adding this addition. What I can speak to for DHS is under previous director Yusuf Scoggan, I know Director Adam Pearson also worked on this as well, is that we did sign an MOU or we were working towards signing an MOU. Sorry, I don't want to misspeak. So I'm going to say working towards an MOU with the Trans Housing Initiative to see if there are partnerships to offer training on this. And I know that Director Pearson has been a vocal advocate as well that any sort of discriminatory practice should definitely be shared with DHS so that we can look into it as well as of course, there's our civil enforcement agency as well. But if there is anything directly that we need to talk about more offline, please let me know on that. I don't know if that fully addresses your concerns here tonight at Planning Commission, but I think Miriam might be able to share an update. Right now, I'll pass it back to her.
My understanding after a moment of discussion here is that an outright for a hit prohibition on discrimination could put this in conflict with legal protections for religious liberty. Which is, I understand, like a pretty disappointing legal answer and speaks directly to your point, but I think that was the legal concern.
I, I mean respectfully, you know, I don't think that that's something that when we're talking about providing shelter, providing housing and making sure that people who are, you know, identified as a particular gender are being turned away from housing. That, that is discrimination. And, you know, even the United States Supreme Court has, you know, validated discrimination based off of sex to be inclusive of gender identity and expression. So
I, I totally hear you. Would it be productive for us to provide a little bit more follow-up communication about this once we have an opportunity to kind of summarize the considerations at play so that this can remain part of the conversation? But so we have a you know, if, if this is then recommended to the Board of Aldermen, that this information can be available for that discussion?
What does that mean specifically in terms of actions related to what's before us now?
Yeah, what I picture is that an option right now is to add this question to the operations plan. And we can work as a team to along with the summit that Planning Commission's recommendation, also work as a team to research this question and provide clear information for the Board of Aldermen's consideration.
Okay.
I'm, I understand that's disappointing. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one really quick one. So a lot of these items which we're recently discussing, I feel like is something that could be addressed during the legislative process at the Board of Aldermen. So this is a question that we've been recently talking about, but should some of these things like parking or notifications of conditional use hearing or you know,
or, you know, dormitory campuses on campuses, or this discrimination language, if any of that were to change during that process, does it then bounce back to us? Okay.
Yeah, it would. And what's, as commissioners know, was proposed in the next action item, is that we would establish a clear kind of clock, under which the Planning Commission would take up those amendments for review following amendment at the Board of Aldermen.
Great, clear process.
All right, is that, your questions? I, I had one question in response to the letters and a couple of the commenters. In terms of the transparency of the processes, I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to respond to those, those questions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll quickly say, and then of course, Marion and Evan are the best to speak to this. We've talked as an internal planning and zoning team, that this is something we want to put on the table in the zoning code overhaul. Like, what are the best practices about this? If we reduce the volume of conditional uses and variances, does that open up some options? All of this is very capacity dependent, but this is going to be on the table in that process. But, Mary, any, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing necessarily to add, just to reiterate that we do expect, when we overhaul the zoning code, to revisit this topic, and certainly look at best practices and see how we can change and align ours.
Thank you very much. All right, we are now ready to accept a motion.
All right, so just to clarify, is staff recommending including this language? Okay. Got it, well, then I, I move to recommend the proposed regulations with the addition of the discrimination language to the text of Board of Aldermen.
Back end, Alderman Cone.
Right, it's been moved by Commissioner Benton and segmented by Alderman Cone. Call for vote, please.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Keong?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Very much. I would have used the word tenacity to describe the Alderman. All right, next we have a report from the Rules and Procedures Committee. Miriam's going to start the presentation on that, and the committee members.
Oh, okay. David's offering a point of order that.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm, I apologize. One. Well, I know it's been.
Miriam, before you start, does anyone need more water? I'll run and get water.
Our reserves are drained.
Oh, you're fine. No one needs water?
We'll get it out.
All right, well, for this item, I know this has been a long meeting already. I can either present each rule and procedure, or maybe I'll leave this up to the commission, or they've, they're all included in the memo. We can skip straight to questions and discussion. I want to follow maybe the commission's lead, because I know this has been a long meeting, and I don't know if a presentation is critical.
Miriam, can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Yeah, I, I was just saying, given that this has been a pretty long meeting, I wanted to offer that, of course, I could present the rules and procedures, or we could skip to questions and discussions if the commission feels familiar enough with the proposed rules and procedures.
I'm going to nod in. Yes. And commissioners online, we're going to just skip to questions about the rules and procedures.
And for members of the public who are in the room and curious or online, the full memorandum describing some of the context for these things is posted online. So should you be curious about some of the context for these recommendations, you can read more about them there. That's all part of the public record as well. Maybe I can quickly offer, these proposed rules and procedures are the work product of a committee, including Chair Boas, Commissioner Garmendia, Vice Chair Benton, and Commissioner Keong. So they, and staffed by David Meyer and myself, so we can, and formerly Chair Strather, that's right. So we can kind of tag team. Questions and discussion.
Maybe just a quick two-sentence summary. I think a couple of months ago, there's some questions about the procedure of how our recommendations move to the Board of Aldermen, and should changes be made? As I just mentioned on the last bill, how that then comes back to us, or if it needs to come back to us. So this working group worked through some of those clarifications. So some of these new proposed rules and procedures just helps clarify that process. And also, there's some confusing language about what a negative recommendation is. So it just clarifies what it means, should we not recommend something, basically.
And then I guess the third thing is, in the last year or more, there's been a lot of, you know, interest in updating zoning policy and some challenges in prioritizing kind of what to work on first and why. And so, rule number three outlines a more formal and structured process for how commissioners, both individually and as a body, can engage in a prioritization discussion.
So to the commissioners online, any questions or comments?
Not on my part.
The commissioners in the room? My left, questions or comments?
I would just like to thank the Planning Department. This has been a lot of time from Miriam and David. You guys have done a lot of work to bring us to this point, so just thank you for doing it.
I guess I'll have like one little comment, just if there's, you know, the impetus for some of these rules were points of confusion on the procedure, and if any new commissioners find anything confusing, and it's not laid out in the rules that we have, then I think that's always an opportunity to discuss procedure and maybe add rule, because it, the point of these rules and procedures is that there's a public document that anyone can understand how the Planning Commission operates, and you don't have to sit on it for years to figure it out. So as we have new members, you're, you being a new member entitles you to, your expertise in figuring out how to be a planning commissioner is valid. And so if we need to make additional rules, this isn't, this was just our first attempt to address some of these issues that come up with the new Board of Aldermen. Extra, all the interests that we have in zoning reform. So, thanks.
And then to that point, another discussion of the committee was, I mean, there are a lot of rules and procedures already in law, and so one of the projects we'll be working on as a planning staff is kind of creating a little bit more of a reference guide for new commissioners that pulls all these things together. It's going to take a minute, but we, we are committed to doing that, because we understand it's important, and there's, it's just complex.
Just, these rules are ones that are adopted by our body and can be changed at any time by the Planning Commission through a vote. It doesn't have to be, it's not a board bill or a resolution or anything, so. And for the public, like, these planning commission rules are ones that are adopted by its members. So if you have any issues with these rules, you can come to the Planning Commission.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt the rules and procedures as enumerated?
Don't move. Second.
Previous rule.
Any objections to previous rule? There are none? They have been adopted. Now we're on to informational items.
So super quick, this is just a monthly reminder that we are planning. Slip-scoop released, everybody has a copy. Great to see some commissioners at the event Monday night. It was a lot of fun. Here's some pictures, and of course, yes, there were land use cookies, if you were wondering. They, they are sweet.
Very sweet.
Because land use is sweet. Transportation Mobility Plan, Scott, do you want to share the? Oh, one, one quick thing while Scott's coming up. We are planning to bring a more thorough update to the Planning Commission on the strategic land use plan at next month's meeting. So kind of tentatively expect that.
Yes, come to our final open house for this round of public engagement for the Transportation Mobility Plan tomorrow, five to seven. Get your double dose weekly planning. After we wrap up this round, we will sort of, we will go into plan development. So we have something to share and react to in the future, Planning Commission and the public, and the Community Advisory Commission Committee, which we share a member with the Planning Commission. And it's exciting, we've had thousands of survey responses to date. And during the last push now, there's lots of interesting information there. And that is all I will say tonight. We will do a more complete update in the future. Thank you.
Another fun planning milestone. Last week was the launch of neighborhood planning at the Ville, Greater Ville, and Kingsway East. Great night. Jonathan Roper would typically present this update, but he and Alexa Seda are at a planning conference. So I'm sharing this in their stead. And oh, some planning commissioners spotted. This was, all this planning is and will be in close collaboration and alignment with For the Villes Cultural Boulevard project. So this event was just a great positive first step in this process. More to come. Other neighborhood planning, making progress, Project Connect contract to restart that work executed. There was a meeting last night, a couple of us attended. And then Plan Area Two, kind of moving ahead, Plan Area Three, moving ahead. And there will be some kind of broader questions coming to the commission at some point in the future about kind of the structure and direction of the neighborhood planning program generally, kind of thinking ahead now that PDA is definitely getting going and busy with neighborhood planning and some of the initial priority areas. So an encoded map overhaul, this is the final, sorry, final update tonight. But good news here, as a reminder, this project will be a close collaboration between planning and zoning staff. And we, it was a joint selection process, including also two commissioners here and a representative comptroller's office. Contract is finalized, it's on its way to the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, then to be executed by the comptroller. And we'll be starting kind of the work to get our ducks in a row and develop a detailed engagement plan in the coming months. So very exciting, this will be a big undertaking, but an exciting and important one.
Excellent, thank you very much. That completes our agenda for today. Our next meeting is November thirteenth, where our new vice chair will be chairing, since I will be joining online. And we will also be opening another new commission. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Previous rule.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
All right, it is bedtime now.
Well, not quite three hours.